Hello and welcome to another segment of Western Wisconsin Journal. I'm Jamie Johnson, legal and government correspondent, and we are doing candidate interviews for the spring election. Nonpartisan election is April 5th, and here in the city of Hudson, we have a contested mayor's race. We have three councilperson districts up. I'm not sure if they'd call them alderperson or councilperson, but we have District Three incumbent Paul DeZiel is my guest. Paul, welcome to the show.
Thank you, Jamie, and I want to start out by saying thank you for the invitation today and also thank you for your leadership on the school board. I know it's been a very difficult two years and I really appreciate your service to our community as well.
Well, thank you, thank you, and I'm not a city resident, but I do read the papers and, you know, I've watched a couple of the meetings. And so I guess before we dive into city business, I want to remind the voters a little bit about your personal resume, if you will, your family, your background, and what you feel qualifies you for this position. So if you want to go ahead, the floor is yours.
Sure, thank you, Jamie. So originally I grew up in a real big family. I have 11 siblings. I grew up in West St. Paul, Minnesota, and I went to the University of Minnesota for my undergraduate degree, which is in secondary ed, social studies, so teacher by nature, so to speak. My master's degree is from the University of St. Thomas, and that is in religious education. And so I first moved to Hudson 20 years ago, and I just fell in love with it. I thought, what a beautiful town, beautiful community, and I've really enjoyed living here the last 20 years. I am married to my wife Tiffany, and she and I met at Hill Murray, where I've taught for 25 years. She's an English teacher at Hill Murray, and we now have four children. So our oldest is Addie, who is a ninth grader at Hudson High School. She's waving to me in the back there. She loves to run cross-country, she loves to play basketball in her driveway, and she's brilliant. She's taking like 11th grade math and reminds me often of that. My second daughter, his name is Etta, her name is Etta, excuse me, and she's in seventh grade. She's real creative, she loves to dance, she loves to paint, she's a real people person. My son Silas is our next, he's a sixth grader, and he is, he is all physical, he is Mr. Sports. He does baseball, football, soccer, you name it. When he's not playing, he's probably watching it, so he's very athletic. And our youngest is named Henry, he's a third grader at EP Rock here, and he loves science, interestingly enough. He loves to watch science videos, he loves to learn about science, he loves Star Wars, he loves playing Minecraft, so just a real sweet kid. And when the kids were little, that helped get me further involved in Hudson. I actually coached their softball teams when they were real little, T-ball, I really should say to be clear. They were the littlest of little, and I coached their soccer teams as well with the Hudson Soccer Association. So it's been a good introduction to Hudson. Like I said, I teach at Hill Murray, I've been there for 25 years teaching theology, and I also work part-time at Guardian Angels Church, where I coordinate the youth program. So we do a lot of service opportunities, mission trips in the summer, things like that. I teach their confirmation program and their junior high program as well through faith formation. Now, they've also been really active, not currently, but in the past was active at St. Croix County Jail, where I did prison ministry for about nine years. So what that consisted of was visiting the jail and usually doing a Bible study or answering questions from inmates. They were some of my best students of all time, actually, Jamie. They were, they asked questions, they had time, so they would read like complete books of the Bible and come at me with some really good stuff. So what I'd say is all this ministry has really taught me that leadership is based on relationships and service. You know, when you work with young people, you realize pretty quick, they don't want you just to say things, they want you to do things. They want you to put your money where your mouth is. So I carry that over to my, I think, my activity here in Hudson. As far as my qualifications for serving the people of District Three, I think first and foremost, my love for Hudson and my care for our community. My approach to city council has really been about respectful listening, it's been about dialogue, it's been about forward thinking about our future, and it's really been about inclusivity as well. I'd say my second qualification would be my vision for Hudson. I believe in creating a safe, strong, and thriving community where everybody feels welcomed, and I believe in creating a community where we care about our neighbors. Jamie, you probably remember last September, when we had that big storm that hit Lakefront Park and all over the city. We had trees down, right?
Yeah, I remember it.
We had the top of the bathhouse blew off and smashed into the library, and we had all that damage. What really impressed me and sticks with me is the response of our community. We had volunteers walking down there, picking up broken glass, trying to deal with trees. We had people reaching out to neighbors. That's what I think is the heart of Hudson, and I think we're a community that cares about each other. The storm brought that out, but I think that happens in other ways as well. But I think that was really Hudson at our best, the day and the week after that storm. I'd say my third qualifications for city council are basically my experience serving on city council, as I've been on city council for the last four years. So I currently serve as the Chair of the Public Works Committee. I also serve on the park board, I've been on that for four years. I'm a liaison to the newly formed Diversity Committee, and I was previously liaison to the school board, where I watched quite a few meetings with yourself, Jamie, and some of the other school board folks. So what I found is that experience is really valuable. I think it took me probably, I don't know, a year or a year and a half, just to try to learn, you know, the role of being a good councilperson, to learn how to represent people. So some of the skills I've developed in the last four years, I would say, is that I come well-prepared for council meetings, and I can keep my concentration and I keep my focus throughout long meetings. And some of those meetings get very long, I've been in five-hour council meetings. Some of them have ended at like 10 minutes to midnight, starting at seven. There've been some marathon meetings, but I've been through that, and so I can, I'm prepared to do that. I'd say another skill is I can respond to being challenged either by emails from people who may not be happy with me, but I can always respond to those emails or those phone calls in a calm nature, a respectful nature, a thoughtful nature, and I think that's really, really key for any representative. I also feel a skill I've developed is accessibility. I feel like I'm easy to approach, I feel like I'm very responsive in returning phone calls and emails to constituents and other folks. And then lastly, I think skills I've developed are really good working relationships. So I really feel I have a good working relationship with all members of the city council. I feel like I have a good relationship, working relationship with Mayor O'Connor. You know, I obviously will have differences from time to time with various council members. That's the nature of democracy, right? That's the nature of public debate. But I'm really open to listening, I'm really open to compromise, and really, it's just, it's about respect. So I think you'd have, if you ask the other council members, I think they would reflect that. And then lastly, for qualifications, I also have a good working relationship with our city staff. So we are tremendously blessed in Hudson. I don't know if folks know this, but we have a very smart, dedicated, talented, young staff. If you look at our city administrator, Aaron Reeves, just a real talented guy, a lot of public service experience. If you look at Mike Maraz from Public Works, if you look at Dean Chamberlain, our new city engineer, Mike Johnson in planning, or Tiffany Wyson, planning, even Becky, our city clerk, our police chief, Willams. I could go on and on, but these folks, these folks are good. They are dedicated servants, they are in there for the right reasons. I really feel that knowing them for the last four years helps me to engage the future with them. I think the last part of your question is why I'm running, is that, was that right?
Yes, yes, well, you did a great job with the qualifications and skills part, and, but having done all that, you mentioned the learning curve, which is really important, you're kind of through that. So why are you, why do you want another two-year term?
Yeah, it's a great question. So I'm really running to keep Hudson a safe and thriving community. Kind of at my heart is promoting the common good of our people. So I really want to promote the common good and listen to constituents. I really want to continue to be a voice of reason, a voice of inclusivity, a voice of forward thinking, and someone who acts on good faith, and I think that's really what we need in city council in the future.
Okay, so as an incumbent, you know, you've seen various issues pop up in the last four years. And so what are you most proud of accomplishing as part of the whole council, or maybe as you as an individual?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I'm first going to talk about what I'm most proud of as a whole council, because I think the truth is that none of us accomplish, accomplishes anything on our own. I think we're in this together. So I'm also reminded of an old African proverb that says, if you want to walk fast, walk alone, but if you want to walk far, walk together. So that's kind of part of my philosophy. So I think it's really important that we work collectively to have wisdom on the council, which I think we've been doing the last few years. So I want to first set the stage, Jamie, if this is okay, before we get into the council accomplishments. I want to set the stage of what's happened the last two years. So I believe we've had three unprecedented events, if you will, or things that have really pulled at Hudson and really made it difficult. Obviously, the first one is COVID-19, which hit in March of 2020. A national pandemic, an international pandemic, made it very difficult for our community in so many ways. You know, shut down a lot of our businesses, our churches, our schools, headed online, things like that. So that was really, really difficult. I think the second thing is the killing of George Floyd in late May of that same year, led to a lot of social upheaval. We saw that throughout Minneapolis and St. Paul, for sure, the epicenter, right? But we saw that in all urban areas across the country, we saw that in Europe. It led to a lot of conversations, tension as well, but conversations about how we can get better with racial equality. And then I think the third thing that's, that was really difficult was the, was the presidential election of 2020. So again, you had a lot of partisanship, you had a lot of back and forth. The election result, of course, was contested by some people, and we saw what happened on January 6th, right, of 2021. And I just can't think of another time, Jamie, in our history where we've had these three things happening at the same time. I mean, you could say 1968, right, was a time of social upheaval. You could say the Civil War was for sure, you know, an insurrection, right? You could say the 1918 Spanish Flu, right, was a challenge. But what I'm trying to get at is all three of those events have happened in this last term that I've been on. And so that's the context. And I think what's happened is that all of those things unfortunately have led to some disunity in our community. They've led to polarization. Instead of people, you know, coming together to say, let's fight a common virus, right? We had a lot of people fighting over whether they should wear masks or not. We had people protesting at schools, which I'm sure you're aware of. In terms of George Floyd, it became very polarizing. Some people just wanted to talk about racial justice, other people just wanted to talk about funding the police. You know, the truth is, we can do both. We can, we can fund our police and be safe, and we can also provide good training, and we can work on policies for better racial justice. And then as far as January 6th, unfortunately, again, it became very partisan. And instead of focusing on something we have in common, which is called the US Constitution, right? The basis of our law, we went in a different direction. So I just see that as the context, or what I want to talk about in terms of the accomplishment. So to get back to your question, it's still on here. I think the first accomplishment, I want to say, is that our city council supported our city staff and community through this time, through this unprecedented time of stress, turbulence, difficult time. I think the city council kept its calm, and I think that's a really important thing, and we weathered that storm together. I think the secondary accomplishment I would like to credit is basically we've done a lot of improvements that are pretty substantial in terms of public safety. So I think back to the fire hall, building the new fire hall on Ward Avenue, which was a big project and has gone well, and has really ensured long-term, I think, safety for fire in our area. The other thing that I know was very contentious in the day was the EMS issue. So you remember probably the big debate between the city EMS and Lakeview? And we transitioned to Lakeview, and it's been, it's been a really good move, because they're, they have proved to be really good on their runtimes, they've been a great asset to our community. They've built their own garage, so to speak, or headquarters, I guess you want to say, up near the Hudson Hospital there. And I just want to remind people, because we forget quickly sometimes in politics, but I did vote to go into negotiations with Lakeview, and really, without that vote, they wouldn't be here, because I was really the tie vote, and then the mayor, of course, supported it. And so I'm proud that the council was able to do that. As far as public safety, also police officers, we've added police officers in the last few years. We've also added a community engagement officer. That's important, I think, to keep our community safe. And then recently, we actually voted to create, or excuse me, to purchase two hybrid police cars. So that's really exciting, because not only is it helping us be safe, it's helping with the environment, it's helping with city costs. And so I'm proud of that. As far as what other things the council have done, the wastewater treatment plant, maybe not as glorious a subject or glamorous a subject, but very important wastewater treatment. We have voted to approve upgrades for that, which will make our city covered basically in capacity until 2040. So I think we're going in the right direction there. Another thing I think that's really important is the comp plan. So the comp plan, which goes to 2040, is our long-range guide for Hudson. Our projected population is 20,000, over 20,000 by 2040. So we took input from focus groups, we took input from surveys, we had hundreds of people basically participate, and we came up with principles basically for guiding our future growth and development. So some of them are small-town charm, inclusion, sustainability in housing, environmentally resilience, economic diversity. I just think it's a really solid plan, so I want to credit the council. I really want to credit Mike Johnson and the Planning Commission for that as well. I think we're making headway with city parks. The park board, which I serve on, passed a future plan as well for sort of highlighting things like acquisition, development, maintenance of parks. Kind of rated some parks as more neighborhood parks and others as community parks. Lakefront Park certainly is going through upgrades, if I want to say, with a future boat launch and what's called a boardwalk, some people call it transient dock. I think that's a really great thing as well. And then I think the last area you want to highlight for accomplishments for the whole council, Jamie, is economic development. So we really have done a lot the last few years. We've approved the St. Croix Metals Development, including the new Phillips Medicise Building. We've approved the Bella Rose Development by Carmichael, right? We've approved the medical building that'll be going on Carmichael. There's been a lot of growth for businesses the last few years. As a matter of fact, at a recent meeting, and had to look it up today, because the numbers always astound me. So David Gray, who's our city inspector, and his assistant, Rhett Borner, in 2021, so here's what the report says, in 2021, they did 3,436 inspections, which is a ton in 365 days, and issued 414 building permits, which were worth a staggering $42.6 million. So basically, it was a record year. So I guess I want to credit a lot of people in Hudson, because with all the context of what I was saying, we've been through difficult times, and yet we've persevered, the business community has persevered, the building community has persevered. So I think those are the biggest group accomplishments, if you will, that I have seen coming out of council in the last few years. Second part of your question, I'm sorry, Jamie, was...
Well, do you take personal credit for any of those?
Oh, well, I certainly supported those, for sure. But on an individual level, I probably have a different set that I would kind of highlight. First thing I'm proudest of is how I've served my constituents, how I've interacted with them, how I've interacted with the council. I just approached my position with professionalism, respect, humility, and I think that goes a long way with people I work with. I also want to say the hiring of Aaron Reeves as city administrator. That was something that, you know, we went through many, many applicants. We had first resumes, then we had video applicants, and then we whittled it down to four people who came in for live interviews. And he just was such a strong candidate to me from the beginning, but as we got to know him more and more, he just was the right choice. So I was very, I don't know if I want to say influential, but he was my number one, and I'm so glad we got him, and I'm so glad he's here still. On a personal level, the safer Hudson Business Partnership is something that I initiated during COVID, back in 2020, when we were going through some very difficult times. The idea was to set up a partnership between businesses and the city. So the idea was if businesses could inform us of their safety protocols back in 2020, we would sort of give them free advertising on our city website. And so we got some businesses to join in that, and again, it was completely voluntary, but it was something we could do as a local government to sort of say, we want to, we want to help our local businesses. Rewriting the memorial policy is something I worked on on the park board. For years and years, it was kind of on record where the policy for people who had passed away, so for loved ones who had people pass away, they were not really allowed to do memorials. And so I just didn't like that, I thought, why are we doing this? Why can't we find a way to help people in grief? And why can't we find a way to help the city benefit, you know, from their generosity? So we, actually, I rewrote the memorial policy and brought it to the park board, which basically now says, if you want to remember somebody, you basically apply with parks, and you know, you can buy, you can purchase a tree, for example, you can purchase a bench, for example. There's ways that you can sort of remember that person. I think another real key accomplishment that I initiated was the new Diversity Committee. And I'm really excited about the Diversity Committee. I think it's something that's long overdue in Hudson, and I think it's something that will really lead the way in terms of helping us as we become a more diverse community, as we continue to grow. It's made up of diverse individuals, and they have a charter that basically talks about raising awareness in the community, coming up with some initiatives to help educate and celebrate cultures in our community. There's possible grants that we can apply for in the future based on what they come up with. So I just think there's some real potential. We just got it going, so to be fair to the committee, they really only started meeting in November. They're just sort of getting going, so...
Well, that's a lot of accomplishments and a lot of work that the city does, so thank you for that insight. Now, looking forward, we've got about seven minutes left for the interview, and I wanted to get into, what do you see as the most pressing issues for the city? You've mentioned what's been done the last four years, so what do you see as the higher areas of focus or priority for the next couple of years?
Yeah, well, thank you for saying that. So first, I want to listen respectfully to all voices in District Three and be a responsible steward of tax dollars and make, you know, good financial decisions. If I'm elected to a third term, my number one priority is road repair. Basically, our city engineer did a study, and we are slipping in road quality throughout the city. We are going to be getting $1.5 million from the American Rescue Plan, and I'd like to take as much of that money as possible and put it into road repair. A second, more specific kind of infrastructure issue is the 11th Street, or what's called the Hagen Bridge. I'd like to widen that. We're actually looking this Monday at three proposals, and trying to make a decision on that, to widen that. It's important because traffic's backing up now, and as the city continues to grow, it's only going to get worse. The other thing is Wisconsin DOT owns that Carmichael Bridge, and you know, in the future, they're going to, at some point, to work on it. I just want to make sure that we're ready so that we don't have both bridges sort of under construction at the same time. Another priority for me is stabilizing library funding. My idea on that is to remove it from the city tax base and put it on the St. Croix County tax base. We have, you know, partners involved in this too, right? So we have Town of Hudson and St. Joe and Village of North Hudson, we're working in partnership. But from the get-go, that agreement has been problematic, and I just think the library has suffered, it's been underfunded. I do want to point out the Library Board of Trustees, led by Paul Burning, and also the director at the library, Shelley Tugus, have done a fantastic job, but we need to support him better. And I think the county is the, is the long-term answer, because it would basically make it fair across the board for all taxpayers. It would be whatever the county levied.
Now, is there any downsides to getting the county involved in the local library?
I don't see it, and as a matter of fact, most libraries, like in the Twin Cities, are run by the county. So the counties will generally run libraries in the Twin Cities. I just see, I see upsides to that. There may be something missing, but that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Another priority for me would be to support more affordable housing. Some people call it workforce housing, housing. You know, we have a lot of teachers, we have a lot of police officers in town. They can't, they work in town, right, but they can't afford to live in town, and I just think we need to remedy that. And then I'd also like to promote outdoor recreation. So a couple ideas I have for that would be to really look at putting in a splash pad for families. Thinking White Camp Park, I've also heard the YMCA, you know, we have no hard plans, so open to whatever would, would work out best. Also, I'm interested in extending a biking hiking trail, which would go north from Lakefront Park toward the Village of North Hudson, kind of along that Lake Maloo corridor with the old railroad bridge there. Then certainly, the new, the new boardwalk is going to help too in Lakefront Park. But I think just getting people outside and having them enjoy themselves would be a great thing.
Okay, so you mentioned then the infrastructure, some parts of the downtown revitalization. And is there anything, now, you mentioned about workforce housing as opposed to affordable housing. Do you see potentially annexation in the more near future rather than far future to accomplish some of those goals?
Yeah, it could be, because we're starting to run out of, you know, we're starting to run out of areas for housing. I was just going to mention this, the, you know, the 2040, the 2040, I'm sorry, the...
Comprehensive.
Comp plan, sorry, it's not yet, comp plan, basically says that by 2040, you know, we're going to have an estimated increase of 1,586 households, actually by 2030, sorry. So yeah, I think part of the annexation piece would be, we would, I think we definitely are going to need to look at housing. It also talks about housing opportunities for elderly folks, as your older folks, I should say, as part of what the need in Hudson is. You know, affordable housing is really defined as you're not paying more than 30% of your mortgage, you know, or excuse me, of your income toward your mortgage. And so there may be even opportunities to look at something like Common Bond, which is in the Twin Cities, to help people in some of those areas, or work in partnership with some of those groups, those nonprofit groups that do that.
Okay, so this would be maybe more duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, that type of housing?
Yeah, it could be, and if there's a big developer that comes in, I think, you know, we can be a little more assertive and say, we want a certain number of units to be affordable housing or workforce housing. That's something that we probably haven't been as strong on in the past as maybe we could be, so...
Okay, yeah, any other areas you mentioned not being maybe as strong as any other areas of improvement in the areas of city leadership? Talk about the accomplishments and things that, you know, are good about Hudson, but areas that you want to see us maybe do better?
Well, you know, I think, I mean, the one thing I want to mention is, you know, the downtown area, so that, you know, we created a TID district, which is that Tax Incremental Financing District. It's the old downtown area. A lot of those sewers, people don't realize this, but a lot of those sewers date back to 1890, and so almost the entire downtown grid is very, very old. And so we just need to get in there and do some work, and, you know, we need to bring in some bigger pipes and modernize that sewer system. So one of the good things about the TID district is, again, it will create revenue for projects like that. So it's not going to be necessarily an additional burden on taxpayers, but it's a way of generating, it's a way of taxing basically the new investment that's put into the, into the district, so...
All right, well, is there any other issues that you wanted to discuss? Maybe give folks that opportunity to know how they can contact you or learn more about your candidacy?
Yeah, for sure, you know, I'm on Facebook at Paul DeZiel for Hudson. You can also just go to the city website, and I have an email on there as well, and people can get ahold of me that way. My cell phone's actually listed on our website, so in terms of accessibility, that's probably the easiest way to do it.
Okay, and any other issues then going forward that folks should consider before voting on April 5th?
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention a couple things. One is that I think in terms of city budget, I know there's a lot of people on fixed incomes, and a lot of people in District Three who are concerned about taxes. I just wanted to say that the city has done, I think, a really good job of holding... I just wanted to say that the city has done, I think, a really good job of holding property taxes down. The biggest increases have come from things like healthcare costs for our employees. And also, the state of Wisconsin has what's called equalized values that has actually raised our taxes. They force us into a position of taxing a certain amount. A couple of quick ideas for what we could reduce some of the city budget in would be hiring an engineering tech. We saved actually quite a bit of money hiring our city engineer, because we're not having to hire consultants and other firms to do it and pay them hourly. But if we had an engineering tech, I think that would help as well. And then I have some ideas for consolidating some boards. For example, the park board, which I'm on, you may want to think about consolidating that with the, with the Urban Forestry Board, because they're so similar in mission, and I think we could save taxpayer time, staff time, excuse me, taxpayer time. Also, transportation. I know there's folks out there who are concerned about getting around town. They might not have a car. They might be older. We are looking at bringing a private van service into town. So that's something we're working on. I know New Richmond and River Falls both have that. And then I also just want to kind of give out a bigger idea, Jamie, which is this. And again, it comes from the context I was talking about before. You know, I've been going door to door for the last seven weekends. And I've heard a lot of people saying, you know, they're tired of division. They're tired of this infighting. They're tired of extreme partisanism. They want a community that works together. They want a more unified Hudson. They want people who are willing to compromise. They want people to be respectful. And so that's basically the approach that I feel I've been trying to do on council for the past four years. So I just think it's been a privilege to, you know, be in District Three. I know with redistricting, it's, it'll be interesting, because there's lots of opportunities now that are different. I've had to meet some new people. I do want to say this too, Jamie, I know we're running out of time, but I want to thank Joy Canutson, my challenger, because I give her a lot of credit for having the courage to enter a public race. And, you know, regardless of any differences we may have in policy, I just see her as a good person. And anybody who's concerned about Hudson enough to knock door to door in the winter, like, my hat's off to you. So kudos to her. So I really feel the people in my district know me. I think I've built some really good trust. I think they know I'm an honest person. I think they know that they can go to me. And so I do really ask respectfully for their votes on April 5th.
Well, very good. Paul, thanks for being our guest. We're running real short on time, so I appreciate you coming here and giving us your take on how the city's doing and what's going on with District Three. So thank you for laying out your priorities. And I want to thank our viewers for watching another segment of Western Wisconsin Journal. Keep watching.